House Bill 4654, Removing Bonafide Schools, Public Libraries, and Museums from the List of Exemptions from Criminal Liability Relating to Distribution and Display to Minor of Obscene Matter to Order. This public hearing, because of the number, the vast number of speakers we have, and this is not unusual, if you've ever been at a public hearing before, we're going to afford each speaker one minute and 30 seconds to be able to speak to the audience today. The clerk will indicate a red light on your, on the speaking podium when your time has expired, and I wish to notify the participants today that we will follow the House rules of decorum. Please do not applause or show your approval or disapproval or shout comments to speakers or members of the legislature or members of the audience. If you wish to submit your comments in writing, please submit them to the clerk seated immediately to my left, and they will become part of the record, and it will be distributed to members of the entire Judiciary Committee. We are now ready to proceed, and I will begin with Eliza Payne, followed by Barbara Stanki. And please forgive me if I mispronounce names, I will do my best, but if I call your name followed by, please go ahead and make your way towards the podium, and then you will be ready to speak, and it will allow us to proceed more quickly. So, Eliza Payne, followed by Barbara Stanki.
What Girls Are Made Of is not filled with sugar and spice and everything nice. It is a vile, obscene, and grossly inappropriate book for children. I pull him off the rail behind some trees, and before I can worry if someone will see us, I go down on my knees. I'm unfastening his pants. I pull him out of his underwear, and he's soft in my hand. I don't look up at his face before I open my mouth and pull him into it, and I pull and I suck until he grows hard, and he makes sounds like he likes it, and I keep going and going, and when he says, "I'm going to come," I don't pull away. The jet of him is warm and salty and tastes like thickened sweat. There's also a part about building a life-size sex toy online, complete with insertion holes. This is for our 12, 13, and 14-year-old children in our middle schools, housed in the middle school library and also available on iPads, apps. Our society is morally bankrupt if we continue to allow children access to this obscenity in our schools. And for you who falsely label this as book banning, write the book, print the book, publish the book, sell the book, and put the book in a public library with restricted access. We are not banning or burning, we are protecting. Pass HB 4654 to protect our children and our parental rights. Schools are only stewards of our children.
Thank you, Ms. Payne. Barbara Stanki, followed by Megan Tarbet.
My name is Barbara Stanki, and I am a West Virginia resident, a parent, and a concerned citizen that strongly opposes House Bill 4654. What is going on here? We are talking about criminalizing teachers, schools, librarians, museums, for books, art, and literature that have been on our bookshelves and in our art museums for years without a problem. The purpose of this bill is to instill fear in our schools and libraries, to display books that are believed to be age-appropriate but may contain material that a few may object to. For example, the book Heather Has Two Mommies might be considered obscene because it's not a traditional family, yet it also speaks to those children who have two mothers, including my son. There are many age-appropriate books and art that relate to different forms of families. If it's not a traditional family, does that make it obscene? Again, who decides? Is fear what we want to foster in our educational facilities, libraries, museums, art galleries? Teachers, librarians, art curators, being afraid of going to prison or being fined for having a book that someone finds objectionable? I urge you to strongly oppose this bill.
Thank you. Megan Tarbet, followed by Monica Brooks.
Good morning. My name is Megan Tarbet, and I'm the president of the West Virginia Library Association, and I'm here to oppose this bill. In other states, similar bills have been used to remove a wide variety of books from libraries and schools on far-ranging topics from puberty, American history, memoirs, the Bible, and even the dictionary. Public libraries are meant to have books on a wide variety of subjects at various reading levels and viewpoints. Putting the threat of jail time in front of our staff, who are also community members, as they select materials, does not foster the collaborative spirit between staff and patrons that makes our West Virginia libraries a necessity to 171 communities in all 55 counties. Like most public service sectors who operate on flat budgets, the potential burden for increased insurance costs or legal representation is of great concern. Additionally, we have questions about how this would be implemented. The current law specifies an adult as a person of 18 years or older. Which adult in the library would be held accountable? Volunteer, staff, board member? Is it only the director? How would the library be prosecuted as an entity? Who is responsible at the end of the day for the felony charges is not clear. What is clear is that the library, and schools, and museums would have to take on additional liability insurance coverage at the taxpayer's expense to protect the very limited resources of their community. For these reasons and more, we urge you to vote against this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Monica Brooks, followed by Carol Miley.
The West Virginia Library Association's Intellectual Freedom Committee strongly opposes House Bill 4654, which proposes a criminalization of librarians and library workers based on a user's perception of what may or may not be obscene. For over 5,000 years, librarianship has remained a trusted profession guarding the general public's freedom to read what is desired without personal judgment or prejudice. Our opposition is grounded in the tenets of the profession, along with supporting data outlined from a recent National American Library Association survey on censorship. Large majorities support school libraries and librarians. 90% of voters and 92% of parents have a favorable opinion of librarians working in local public libraries and school libraries. Most respondents opposed book removals in school libraries after considering arguments from both sides. Voters and parents have confidence in libraries and librarians. A significant majority, close to 80%, from all political affiliations, believe that librarians are appropriately trained and do a good job offering books that represent a variety of viewpoints. A majority appreciate diverse books. Over 80% of voters and parents overwhelmingly support the protection of young people's access to books that provide different perspectives. Respondents believe parental rights are important. Over 75% agree that individual parents can set the rules for their own children but do not have the right to decide for other parents what books are available to their children. In conclusion, we believe criminalization of librarians based on subjective perceptions of obscenity is counter to a majority opinion and a direct threat to intellectual freedom, parental rights, and the essential role of libraries in providing diverse viewpoints. We urge lawmakers to reconsider House Bill 4654 and uphold the principles of intellectual freedom.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks. Thank you. Carol Miley, followed by Brianna Bowen.
I retired in 2011 from Canow County School after serving 25 years as an elementary school librarian. Excuse me. I noticed for several years while working, children's literature began having some troubling themes, dark overtones, inappropriate language, but nothing prepared me for what I saw around three years ago. Vulgar descriptions of sexual acts, filthy language, pornographic depictions. Many of these are occurring in books that describe homosexual acts and relationships. The books I've seen are available to our students through graphic novels and books with teenage main characters. While not all school libraries have these on their shelves, almost every title we have found inappropriate is available through public libraries, often as ebooks or audiobooks. House Bill 4654 gives us a chance as a community to look closely at what is being offered to our minor children. Many of the offensive titles are even award winners. The community standards against obscenity are being openly mocked and defied. Seven states do not have obscenity exemption statutes. I urge you to pass this bill. This is not about banning books, it's about protecting our minor students from being abused. I call it mind rape or word pornography. Thank you for standing strong on this issue.
Thank you. Brianna Bowen, followed by Sarah Pawfree.
Thank you, Chairman and members of the committee. I appreciate you taking the time to hear me today. My name is Brianna Bowen. I am a wife, mother, Christian, and I'm also a librarian. I represent libraries in seven West Virginia counties that house thousands of materials for public use and access. I am honored to work in a state whose motto is, "Mountaineers are always free." Ladies and gentlemen, that is how I would like to remain, free. This bill threatens the freedom of countless hard-working, tax-paying constituents across our state and instills fear in individuals who have dedicated their life to serving the public and making your communities better. Individuals from all demographics and all walks of life work within the walls of the library. We employ grandparents, caregivers, college students, active community leaders, and retirees. We are your neighbors, friends, and your supporters. I ask that cultural wars are not used to divide us. Libraries and librarians want to continue working with lawmakers. We do not want to waste taxpayer funds and precious resources on rising litigation and insurance costs associated with the criminalization of hard-working and honest people. Let us not overtax our already struggling communities. Let us keep our friendly neighborhood librarians out of jail. We are West Virginians. We know the impact of that sentence when we say it. We care about one another, and we take care of one another. Do not advance this bill, do not criminalize library workers. We are under your protection too. I'm here to ask for protection of library workers. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Pawfree, followed by Jessica Rowley.
Good morning. I'm speaking in opposition to HB 4654. There are 97 library systems covering all 55 counties in West Virginia. 35% of them operate on a budget of less than $100,000 a year. In addition to all state and federal criminal laws, there are 24 sections of code and corresponding administrative rules that we adhere to. We go through an extensive audit every year to ensure that we are being good stewards of tax dollars. This bill will have real and significant financial implications on our libraries. Adding in criminal liability insurance is a real cost that cannot be covered without reducing services to our communities, vital services. Many libraries get their buildings and officers' insurance through a municipality or a county commission. The increased costs may cause them to be dropped entirely, creating a bigger deficit in their budgets. These libraries can't offer their staff health insurance or sick days, but will have to carry criminal liability insurance to protect the taxpayer assets that we hold so dearly. While library use continues to grow, there are nearly a million cardholders in this state. 45,000 of them were new last year. The state has held public libraries to a flat budget for more than a decade. We also want to keep our kids safe, our kids. They are our kids, from baby storytime straight through retirement. We care about them deeply, and this is just one more cost we cannot cover. Please vote against this bill.
Thank you. Jessica Rowley, followed by Eli Baumwell.
Hi. I'm here today to voice my support for House Bill 4654 that removes the criminal exemptions for libraries, schools, and museums when distributing or displaying obscene material to minors. So today, I'm going to show you some examples of the material found in my county, Wood County, which was in the public library 10 feet away from the door where I saw children as young as 10 years old walking past this filthy book that has an image of two cartoon characters, one with a strap-on dildo and the other bent down performing oral sex, and was by the front door of the public library, which any child could have walked in and grabbed. Now, I would tell you that the library is actually already breaking state law because the parents were not with the children, so they're already breaking the law. Okay, the next example, let's talk about it, which is in the young adult section, which the American Library Association says the young adult is defined as 12 to 18 years old. So this says, this teaches children how to insert butt plugs. It tells them to look up pornography. It tells them how to properly masturbate. It was in Parkersburg South High School, and it was put in the library by a high school principal. So, let's see, after the train has left the station and you've had a chance to wash up or douche back there, you can have an assload of fun with a healthy heaping of lube. Apply broad pressure to the outside of the entrance. Circle your butthole with your finger, pausing any time a spot feels extra good. Dip just the tip of your finger inside and let your anus pull it in when it's ready.
Thank you, Ms. Rowley.
Is this what we want our children to read? We can do better, West Virginia.
Thank you, Ms. Rowley. Eli Baumwell, followed by Brian Ritz.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. My name is Eli Baumwell. I'm the interim executive director with the ACLU of West Virginia. I'm here to speak in opposition to House Bill 5654. I want to just lay bare what this bill is. This is what I would call a blanket and cudgel strategy. This body will hide under a blanket of existing precedent that says that obscenity is a very narrow definition. It has to have no cultural value, no literary value, no artistic value, no educational value. Anything you find in a library, in a school, in a museum, is going to meet one of those things. They are not designed purely to meet the purient interests. So we can hide behind this blanket and say, "We're not talking about that. Anyone who opposes this must want actual smut." But as we've heard from some of the speakers, as we've seen in legislation that's been introduced in this body, people do define many things that are protected as obscenities, and they will use that cudgel over educators, over librarians, over curators, so that they feel scared to put out important cultural, educational, historical value. You may not like it, but it does not mean that we should be censoring it as a government and in a body in a country where freedom of speech and freedom of expression is one of the fundamental values. So I urge you again to oppose this piece of legislation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Brian, I know I'm pronouncing this incorrectly, Ritz.
It's Rais, just like the, it's a Rais.
Rais, thank you, followed by Rusty Williams.
I'm Brian Rais. I'm the director at the Parkersburg Wood County Library. Boy, I'm nervous. Love the Lord your God with all your heart, and with all your soul, and with all your mind. This is the first and greatest commandment, and the second is like it, love your neighbor as yourself. I stand before you as a Christian and as a librarian. I believe greatly in the words I just said. They are the guiding of my life. I take my job very seriously. I serve my community with the best of my abilities. I also believe in the words of liberty and freedom. They are the basis of our country. They're the basis of what we do in libraries. We protect your freedom, your freedom to read, and we believe we should not be that gatekeeper. In order to best serve our community and protect the children there, we believe that the parents have the best ability to do so. And in our library, our policies reflect that. I will be glad to share that with anyone in this room. I will be glad to answer any questions or comments you have. I will listen to them. Our policies for challenging are so that people in our community, if they have a problem with the material, they can bring it to us and challenge it, and we can have a reasonable discussion. We do not want to be gatekeepers. We think the best person to decide what is right for their child is the parent. Thank you for speaking.
Thank you. Rusty Williams, followed by Daniel Curry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not sure there's anything I could say that my colleague, Mr. Baumwell, hasn't already said. I understand that people are very passionate about this issue and with good reason. You know, I have a daughter in the public school system, and I'm very concerned with what material she's exposed to. But it's not the job of our elected officials to dictate the books that our kids read and the content that they consume. That's my job as a parent. And if my daughter gets a hold of some inappropriate material, I've failed as a parent. She loves the library. She's got that from me when I was a kid. I was raised in a single-parent environment. We didn't have a lot of money to travel and do the things that I wanted to do, and the library was my escape. I had to walk past it every day, and I'm very grateful for the library card. That was my ticket to the world, and I'm very glad that she has taken that as well. I think it's important to point out to hypocrisy that we've got folks in here that want parents to have the right to ignore peer-reviewed science and medical standards and best practices when it comes to vaccinations, but you don't think we're smart enough to make decisions regarding what content our kids consume? To me, there's a bright hypocrisy in that. Personally, I find it offensive. I don't guess I should be shocked, though, because some of the same people calling, you know, railing against LGBTQ inclusive clubs and displaying flags of solidarity in public schools because it's indoctrinating our kids, are also advancing bills requiring, "In God We Trust," be posted in schools, the teaching of intelligent design and creationism in science class, and advancing bills that would make high school students watch pro-life propaganda video as part of a course on human development. Please vote this bill down. It's wrong for West Virginia.
Daniel Curry, followed by Sally Roberts.
Thank you, delegates, for the opportunity to be able to speak. My name is Daniel Curry. I'm a minister of the Church of Christ in Parkersburg and Wood County. I'm the father of three sons, my husband as well. Before my career in ministry, I was a West Virginia state trooper, served in counties of Wayne County, Campbell County, and various counties throughout the state, and I support the passage of bills like HB 4654. We have a responsibility to protect our children, a God-given responsibility, to protect our children. But what I would ask, why is the need for obscene matter in schools and libraries? By definition, obscene matter, according to Chapter 61, Article 8A, and Section 1, "An average person applying contemporary adult community standards would find taken as a whole appeals to the per unit interest intended to appeal to the per unit interest or is pandering to a per unit interest." I encourage you to continue to read that definition and ask, why do we need obscene matter in our schools and libraries? Also, I homeschool my three children. Trust, trust has been harmed when it comes to trusting the public school system. I want to see it succeed. I don't want to see so many parents that don't have trust in their school systems and are leaving the public school systems because they don't trust it. I want them to, if they choose to homeschool, it's because that's what they choose to do, not because that is the better option. I want them to have trust with their school systems as well. But again, I thank you for your service, your life of service as a delegate to state. Thank you.
Thank you. Sally Roberts, followed by Ash Orr.
My name is Sally Roberts, Chair of Rise Up West Virginia. I'm here today to voice opposition to HB 4654. No one is in favor of providing obscene materials to minors. This bill, however, seems to be less about protection and more about persecution, and it is clearly unnecessary, potentially harmful, and frankly unconstitutional. I'm a lifelong West Virginian who grew up with a grandmother and community who taught us to live and let live. West Virginians used to abide by that rule and were considered one of the friendliest states in the nation. Do not let national legislation put forward by wealthy individuals with political and economic agendas change the nature of our state by promoting division and hate. Our citizens and representatives were better than that in my grandmother's day. Vote against HB 4654.
Thank you. Ash Orr, followed by Anita Dacami, I believe.
Hi, my name is Ash Orr. My pronouns are he, they, and I am here to ask you to dismiss House Bill 4654. The rise in book bans and the corresponding increase in legislative efforts to restrict the teaching of topics such as race, gender, American history, and LGBTQ plus identities is undermining the essential freedom of students to read, learn, and engage in critical thinking. Book banning amounts to censorship, a practice that suppresses ideas and information. Beyond its infringement of free speech, book banning poses a real threat to democracy. Democracy thrives on the unrestricted flow of information and ideas, fostering independent thinking among our citizens. Limiting access to diverse information contradicts the fundamental principles of the United States, and censorship serves as initial steps towards tyranny, granting a selective few control over the narrative for the masses. An additional compelling reason to condemn book banning is its role in hindering societal progress. By attempting to limit challenges to the status quo, book banning stifles intellectual growth. Engaging in book banning is disgraceful and is reminiscent of the actions taken in 1930s Germany. It's crucial to deeply reflect on this matter. If we fail to acknowledge the significance of preserving knowledge, even if it makes someone uncomfortable, then what purpose does recording history serve? This action not only leads to the banning of certain books, but also poses a threat to religious literature, including the Bible, which also contains graphic stories. I urge you all to reconsider this bill. Thank you. I'll also be submitting over 20 testimonies that encourage folks to also vote against House Bill 4654.
Thank you. Anita Dacami, followed by Jeff Smiley. Anita Dacami, it's the only Anita on the list, calling once, calling twice to Anita. Jeff Smiley, followed by Kendall Harlan. Jeff Smiley?
Is it Smith?
Okay, the T's not crossed, but yes. Jeff Smith, followed by Kendall Harlan. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm in support for the House bill, and one of the main reasons is, as we went down the journey of trying to discover books in the library, a group of citizens did try to work with the public library director to just say, "We want to try to make sure kids don't have easy access to the books." But as this discovery process went on, this book, "Let's Talk About It," is in the public library. There were two copies. This is one of the copies. You can see it has young adult on it. In this book, it says, "A great place to research fantasies and kinks safely is on the internet. There are tons of people and communities out there who share your interests and have all kinds of advice. The only world is, the online world is also chock block, chock-a-block full of pornography professionals and amateurs alike sharing their sexy adventures online. When consumed right, porn can help you discover new aspects of your sexuality and help you safely explore kinks and fantasies. But beyond your age and where you find, found it, porn can also be unethical or illegal to watch, so do your research." Exclamation point. Look up interviews with your fave porn performers, go to the sites they recommend, and pay for your porn. And here's pictures showing these kinds of acts. So when I hear that we need to defend and leave things in here, where's the part about sexualizing the children? So this book was challenged, because we hear, "Well, you don't challenge the books." The books was challenged, and the library director, which is here, stated to me that he had never reviewed this book before it went on the shelf. So these books are just going on the shelf without any review. So he did state that to me. The book was challenged, and on March 17th, it says, "The library's reviewed the book, let's talk about it." In response to your challenge, submitted on March 17th, the book meets the criteria for being in the collection in the current locations, young adult sections.
Thank you. Thank you. Kendall Harlan, followed by Beau Burgess.
Good morning. My name is Kendall Harlan. I'm a West Virginia resident, a mother, and the youth services librarian at the South Charleston Public Library. I am alarmed and disappointed that you are considering House Bill 4654, as it opens library staff, not to mention teachers and museum staff, to criminal penalties for doing our jobs. We serve the public, youth included, by protecting their intellectual freedom and resisting any effort, including this one, to censor library resources. I think we are all in favor of protecting children from truly obscene materials, but what reasonable people consider obscene matter, as defined by West Virginia Code, may differ. Current law protects us from getting mired in frivolous debates over whether or not a work is truly obscene or instead demonstrates literary or artistic value. Current law also protects the courts from getting bogged down in these meaningless cases. Removing the protection will waste already limited resources and will open us, library staff, to bullying at best and felony charges at worst. Is this really just an attempt to get West Virginia on the increasingly Is this really just an attempt to get West Virginia on the increasingly popular book banning bandwagon? I would love to see time and money spent on improving the quality of our public education and on evidence-based literacy initiatives rather than on non-issues that pander to ignorance and fear mongering. I'd also like to remind you that it wastes taxpayer dollars to pass bills that will not pass constitutional challenge in federal court. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak this morning. Let Freedom Read.
Thank you. Beau Burgess, followed by Fred Albert.
Hello, my name's Beau Burgess. I'm a pastor and director of West Virginia Baptist for Biblical Values. I stand today in support of House Bill 4654, which protects children from pornographic and other obscene material in schools and libraries. This bill does not restrict or prevent or ban these materials from adults, but it simply protects underage minors, children, from having access and seeing these things. And yes, it is happening in our state. There were several books found in Wood County schools, as it's already been mentioned and read, teaching kids that sexting is a good idea, that they should pay to watch pornography, giving misleading information about STDs and depictions of oral sex scenes and other graphic sex scenes. Why would anyone want to expose our children to this? It's not about education of our children, but the indoctrination and sexualization of our children from an evil ideology and agenda, and the attack on the family, and it's criminal. There's a reason that minors can't go to a strip club or buy pornographic material from stores, because it's illegal. So why is it a crime in these instances, but it's okay in our public schools and our libraries? That's the point. It's not okay. It should be a crime anywhere to show obscene and pornographic material to minors. Our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ said that if anyone offends these little ones, it would be better that a millstone were tied around their neck and tossed into the sea. Let's do the right thing and protect our children.
Thank you, Mr. Burgess. Fred Albert, followed by Gail Westover.
Good morning. I'm Fred Albert, President of the American Federation of Teachers of West Virginia, and I'm here to offer my comments on House Bill 4654, which would make schools, museums, and our public libraries subject to prosecution for displaying or distributing obscene materials to minors. Is this happening so frequently that it requires legislation? Is this really a problem in our schools or our libraries or our museums? Because I don't hear anything from our teachers and our service personnel who are there every day that this is a frequent issue, and I have never heard that. And I've been in this office since 2018, and I was the local president in Canola County since 2004. What I do hear about are the real issues facing our public schools. A teacher and service personnel shortage that is affecting every school in West Virginia every single day. Student behavior and discipline issues that have escalated to a level not seen before in our schools, and our staff are begging for help. Education employees quitting the profession altogether and moving to careers with higher pay, leaving our children without certified educators in the classroom. What this bill truly seeks to do is criminalize librarians, teachers, and museum curators for making available certain books or artwork. Perhaps the most concerning part of all is this following question: What is obscene? And who decides that? Would the books?
Thank you, Mr. Albert.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Albert.
I'd like to submit my comments.
Certainly. Gail Westover, followed by Dale Lee.
Good morning. I'm asking you to pass Bill 4654 to rescind the obscenity exemption for schools and libraries. Exposing children to obscenity at a young age is like trying to draw a straight line from the earth to a target on the moon and deviating it by a quarter of an inch at the beginning. You'll miss the target by thousands of miles. Train up a child in the way he should go, and when he is old, he will not depart from it, and he will hit the target. No child needs to be exposed to the filth and indiscretion of graphic obscenity, portrayed in some of our books and digital material accessible through playpads. Books like It's Perfectly Normal in the Riverside Public Library with its graphic art should be placed in a locked section of the library out of the reach of young children. Books like Nick and Nora's Infinite Playlist could not be read here, but it's within reach of the students at George Washington High School. We don't need that. Removing this obscenity from schools will keep the school curriculum on track, teach our kids subjects, facts, and truths that will enable them to make wise choices and help them reach their goals successfully. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Thank you. Dale Lee, followed by Steve Rataba. It's the only Steve on the list. I hope I have it right. Thank you.
Thank you for giving my name right. I'm Dale Lee. I'm the president of the West Virginia Education Association and a 22-year special ed math teacher at Princeton Senior High School. I stand before you today in opposition of this House bill. I have a three-and-a-half-year-old grandson and a 10-day-old grandson, and the three-and-a-half-year-old loves to go to the library in Princeton. Every Friday, he goes. And what they have done with him, with his love of reading books and doing crafts and the socialization, is absolutely amazing. My fear is, people will not want to be a part of the library anymore. People will not want to go. People will not want to work in the library, and we'll have those opportunities for our kids taken away. We have 1,705 teaching positions across the state of West Virginia without an uncertified teacher in it. If this bill passes and you're subject to prosecution, that number is just going to increase tenfold. What are we doing? What are we doing? We're playing to fear. We're pushing an agenda that wants to make you afraid of what's going on. There's a bill to... Adam, my light's up, so please oppose this bill.
Thank you. Steve Rataba, followed by Robin Kincaid.
Good morning. I'm here to speak to you in favor of House Bill 4654. I'm a Christian. I'm a husband of 53 years. I'm a father, and I'm a grandfather, and concerned of what's being taught to our children in schools. A school in Miami made international news when it supposedly banned the poem by Amanda Gorman that she read at President Biden's inauguration. What really happened? The KH school moved the poem from the elementary to the middle school section of the same library. Given that most English-language speakers understand the word "banned" to mean "made unavailable," we conducted a study to determine how many of the 2,532 books that PEN America alleged were banned were actually still present in school libraries. The answer: about 3/4 of them. The media has fabricated the narrative that book bans are about race. We found that while some parents have certainly objected to books about race, school districts seldom oblige that objection. For example, PEN America listed the Black Lives Matter-inspired "The Hate U Give" as the fifth-most banned book. We found it available in every single school library in question. Are school libraries banning thousands of books? Here's why you shouldn't trust the left's narrative. The media has also fabricated the narrative that book bans are about LGBTQ identity. Please support this bill.
Thank you.
Christians, grandparents, and parents.
Thank you. Robin Kincaid, followed by Sally Rataba.
Good morning. I'm Robin Kincaid. Finally, the good God-fearing, Bible-believing, upstanding, evangelical, amosexual Christians in this house are doing something about insanity in our schools and libraries. When I was in school, there were books with horrible stories. There was one about a man who lied to his leader and told him his wife was his sister and encouraged the powerful man to fornicate with her. Then his nephew tried to get a gang of men to assault his own daughters. His daughters got even with him, though. They got him liquored up and sexually assaulted with him and got pregnant. Disgusting. Then this army went into battle and killed every man, woman, and boy child, leaving only the little girls so the priests could rape them in the name of God. Oh, wait. Those are all stories from your Bible, your holy Bible. You're okay with that kind of obscenity? This bill is no different than the laws that were passed in Germany in 1933, and the same kind of people want to pass them. HB 4654 is what's obscene. Stop it.
Sally Rataba, followed by Paul Sheridan.
I love the Lord. I'm also a mother, a wife, and a grandmother, and I ask you to pass the bill, the House Bill 4654. This is an insert from a book called Me, Earl, and the Dying Girl. It's in Williamstown Parkersburg High School in Parkersburg South. "Are you gonna eat her pussy?" "Yeah, Earl, I'm going to eat her pussy." "Hey, yeah." "Do you even know how to eat pussy?" "Papa Gaines never sat you down, said, 'Son, one day, you're going to have to eat the pussy.'" "No." "But he did teach me how to eat a butthole." "God bless that man." "Yup." "I would teach you some pussy-eating techniques, but it's a little complicated." "Son, I don't have time for that. I got like 20 pussies over here that I need to eat." "Is that right?" "I'm on pussy deadline." "You've got 20 vaginas all lined up in a row?" "Ah, what the hell? What the hell?" "No, one's talking about vaginas." "Greg, what the hell is wrong with you, man? That's nasty." "I'm talking about pussy. I got a little honey mustard over here, a little Heinz 57, and a whole lot of pussy. This is not what I want my kids and my grandkids to find in libraries. I want my kids to know how, my grandkids to know how to do math, writing, and arithmetic. Let's get real here."
Thank you. Paul Sheridan, followed by Philip Dunn.
My name is Paul Sheridan. I oppose this legislation. This bill is designed to create the threat of felony prosecution against librarians and schools. It's not about protection. I'm the father of two children, now grown, who learned to read with the help of dedicated teachers and librarians. When my children were young, they spent many hours at the public library. They knew the library as a safe place where curiosity and inquisitiveness were encouraged. They learned from and became very attached to librarians who responded to their curiosity. These were adults who were not their parents, who took an interest in what interested them, and their experiences in libraries were no small part of what made them into healthy, productive adults. This proposed legislation risks undermining what we should value and preserve. Teachers and librarians are essential, and they're underappreciated public servants. We do not advance any legitimate cause by putting a felony target on their backs. If we treat schools and libraries as places to be afraid of, where danger lurks, which must be routed out and crushed, our children will absorb this fearfulness. If we treat teachers and librarians as potential criminals, we cannot expect them to continue to dedicate themselves to their important work. And we cannot expect our children to absorb the passion for learning, which these public servants can offer our children.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Philip Dunn, followed by Andrew Schneider.
Hello. I'm here today as a father, concerned father, grandfather, and a pastor of children that attend Canola County schools. I was informed a while back about these books, and I couldn't believe what I was hearing till I went to a Board of Education meeting and heard an excerpt from a book. It was Ellen Hopkins' book on crank, and it was the graphic description of a brutal rape of a 16-year-old girl. And as I sat there, my ears burned and my heart broke. But what got me the most was, as I looked around, the five board members, no one blinked. No one said anything. If I introduced that literature to my young people at the church, I would go to jail. I don't understand why obscene pornographic filth is illegal everywhere else but in the church and in the school. So I just want to say today that I'm not against people that are hurting, that are broken, that are seeking a better way. I want our kids to do well. You all were elected to make West Virginia a better place and to protect our citizens, and our most vulnerable citizens are children. And if we allow this obscene pornographic filth to be poured into their hearts and their minds on a daily basis, it's going to pollute their souls and destroy their moral compass. You know, 1,000 people can declare that the truth is a lie or a lie is a truth. It doesn't change the fact. It doesn't matter how many people come up here and declare that evil is good.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Andrew Schneider, followed by Kara Butler.
Good morning. My name is Andrew Schneider, and I'm the Executive Director of Fairness West Virginia. I'm here to speak in opposition to House Bill 4654. LGBTQ-plus people are not obscene. The stories and books about our lives are not obscene. Nothing in HB 4654 changes that. But let's be clear: This is a bad bill. It's clear that some lawmakers want to eliminate any mention of LGBTQ-plus people in our schools, museums, and libraries, and although this bill won't accomplish that goal, it could have a serious chilling effect on free speech. Teachers may not understand this bill and may decide to cut any mention of LGBTQ-plus people from their class in fear of facing criminal charges. It may make them rethink whether their classroom can be a safe space for all students. LGBTQ-plus people are not obscene. We are your friends, your neighbors, your colleagues, and yes, even your teachers. And we're not going anywhere. Thank you.
Thank you. Kara Butler, followed by Mickey Blackwell.
Good morning. My name is Carol Butler. I'm here to support HB 4564. I'm going to take an excerpt of a book called Beyond Magenta, which is actually in the Van Deeder Middle School. And Beyond Magenta is about a six-year-old giving oral sex. I was sexually mature. What I mean by sexually mature is that I knew about sex. From six up, I used to kiss other guys in my neighborhood and make out with them and perform oral sex on them. I like it. I used to love oral, and I touched their you-know-whats. We're here to advocate for the innocent children, those that are promoting this pornographic material. Like the gentleman said before, if I took these exact books, went outside and handed it to a child, I would be arrested. We need to return to a God-fearing country again. Do you think God is happy with this? Thank you.
Thank you. Mickey Blackwell, followed by Mike Turner. Mickey Blackwell, followed by Mike Turner.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Mickey Blackwell, I am the executive director of the West Virginia Principals Association, the largest such association in the state of West Virginia. And before I go any further, I want to give you my cell number, 1304-610-6680. I hope you all of you delegates write this down, because 90 seconds will never be enough time to cover this material, but we can reach out, and I can put you in contact with the folks who actually know what's going on in their schools, and the folks who actually work. I walked in with the minister from Parkersburg, he's a good man, he was carrying his Bible, and I said, "You must be here for intellectual freedom," and he said, "Yes," and I said, "Me too," and of course, we have divergent ideas. That's called a democracy. He was carrying his Bible, and I was carrying a copy of Huck Finn and a copy of Howe by Allen Ginsberg. Written in the 1800s, Huck Finn has been accused of being obscene and racist for many times, and written in the 1950s, Howe was, actually had to go to court to be proven that it was not obscene. I was an English teacher, I was a principal, I was a superintendent, and I would love to speak with you on this topic, but who I would like to speak to most are the people that you guys are not addressing, and that is the parents. The parents are the single most responsible person for the raising of a child. If a kid comes home with a book from a library, and the parent looks at it and finds it unacceptable, that parent should be responsible for saying, "No, this is not something that we read in our home."
Thank you.
It is always the parent's responsibility. Throw a few of them in jail.
Thank you, Mr. Blackwell. Thank you, Mr. Blackwell. Mike Turner, followed by Dennis Westover.
Good morning. My name's Mike Turner, I'm from Peyton City, West Virginia, and I'm on the Peyton City Public Library Board. I'd like to share with you some information about our, our library. Peyton City is a community of 2,100 people. Last month, our circulation was 962. We use, the people of Peyton City use the library. We have no pornography available to the minors. Our board wants to keep it that way. For our collection, we have a policy in place that goes from cradle to grave. We take care of it. We don't need a new law that will cause someone to bring in pornography and expose it to toddlers and youth. It's not needed, it's not needed. Please don't do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Dennis Westover.
West Virginia Code 618A, 3A and B are what's relative to Bill, House Bill 4654. 4654 removes exemptions that schools and libraries have that permit them to, to display what is legally defined as obscenity. Why should our schools and libraries need an exemption from what's legally defined as school, as obscenity? There are people that are speaking in favor of, of this bill, 4654, that have been called out in public meetings, school board meetings, city council meetings, for simply reading what's in the schools. They have been called out and said, "You gotta stop, or we're gonna have to arrest you." This has happened in our state in this past year. Yet, it's okay to read it in the schools. That is absolutely not acceptable. Speaking of God and the Bible, the Bible talks about life, good choices, bad choices, and consequences, and some of the bad choices involve sex. But if you read a little further, there are always consequences to poor choices, including sex. The poor choice to permit obscenity in schools needs to haven't, just, that just needs to not be permissible anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate the civil, yet very enlightening debate on this bill. This public hearing is now concluded on House Bill 4654. Thank you for attending.